If you are here for an item that is on the agenda, we would ask for you to wait for that item to come up and to address the council at that time. If you are here for an item that is not on the agenda, there will be an opportunity under public communications to address the council. The next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I would just invite all of you to stand with us and recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge-
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Mike, do we have any changes to the agenda?
Mayor, there's a few changes. First, Item 5M, we'll move to the non-consent agenda. Item 5S, 5T, and 5U, there were Scrivener errors. So 5S is actually Resolution 25-42. 5T is Resolution 25-43.
Wait, 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 back up to S. What is it?
5S is Resolution 25-42, so it's off by one digit. 5T is 25-43. And 5U is 25-44.
Any other changes? Counsel, any changes to the agenda? Saying none, Cindy vote, please. Whoops, we need a motion. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Modified. We have a motion and a second?
Can somebody review what these, the items before we vote? Just want to make sure we got them all.
So, go ahead, Mike.
Item 5M is Consider Resolution 25-40 to not remand the Board of Adjustment case number 2408 to the Board of Adjustment for reconsideration. So that's being moved to the non-consent agenda. 5S is just changing the resolution. So it currently says Resolution 25-41. Change that to 25-42. 5T currently says Resolution 25-42. That's being amended to 25-43. And then 5U currently says Resolution 25-43. That's being amended to 25-44.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? If not, Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. We have, the next item on the agenda is Public Hearings, and we have five public hearings this evening. The first, 4A, is to conduct a public hearing and consider approval of the first reading of Ordinance Number 1131, an official zoning map amendment to rezone 3.7 acres from E1 Office Employment District to E2 General Employment District. Properties are located at 5725, 5705, 5665 West Parkway. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:05.
So this rezoning was brought to us by ARM LLC. They submitted an application to rezone roughly 3.7 acres from E1 Office General Employment to the E2 District for the General Employment District. The comprehensive plan identifies this property as business employment, and the proposed land use is consistent with that. It's currently zoned E1 with bulk regulations and restrictions. You can have a minimum lot area of about 20,000 square feet. You have a minimum lot width of 100. Their front setback is 30, your side setback is 20, and your rear setback is 20 as well, or 35, I'm sorry. They're proposing to rezone it to E2, and some of those just, E1 and E2 is very similar, but there are some uses that obviously aren't allowed in Arlo. The allowed uses in E1 that are different, I've kind of outlined those in the staff report. Theater, dance, or music facility is allowed in E1, whereas in E2, you can have the addition of a brewery, winery, light manufacturing, storage facility for personal, warehouse and distribution facility, warehouse trade establishment, agriculture. The intent of E1 District specified a suitable environment for employment centers, offices, workplaces, and associated kind of this complementary uses, whereas the E2 is kind of the next step up. It still provides that suitable environment for wide variety of employments, mostly that retail service office, warehousing, kind of that next, kind of, I would say, level of uses. Staff recommends all of the subject properties be compliant with the E1 architecture. That is, when, in 2023, a couple years ago, when the city went and re-zoned the West Park from the PUD to what it is now, the current E2 uses, there was a requirement that the E1 architecture standards be used for the E2. And to keep that compliance and keep that standard, we recommend that condition as well. So the north is property zoned R4, that high-density mixed residential in E1. To the east is property zoned PUD. It's more of that West Park. Same E1 to the south, as well as E1 and E2 to the west. The property is not within any floodplain. I'd be very happy to answer any questions. Throughout the process, we've had some phone calls. Mostly, they've been about, kind of, what is going to go there? Kind of more of what's going to be seen there? What, and not as much of the rezoning itself. There's more questions, but more of, kind of, potentially what the future is. I know there's been, part of the Good Neighbor Notice, I know that there was a, kind of, a rendering of that drawing that you guys may have seen, probably some of the public have seen. That is not, obviously, on the pro discussion today. It's more of just the rezoning. That'll be a later process. Happy to answer any questions for you.
Counsel, have any questions for Jacob?
I do, Mayor. Jacob, can you help me understand? You went into detail with regard to the setbacks on the different sides. Am I to assume that the front is? This is kind of a unique property from the standpoint of, it's bordered by several different streets. So is the West Parkway the frontage?
That's correct.
And so White Oak and Northwest 92nd Street, then, would be considered the back face of those?
Yes, they'd be the rear, the rear yard for you.
And does E2 allow for any additional entrances or exits from that back face? In other words, will they always have to enter these, including car washes potentially, including storage, light storage, things like that? They'll all have to enter that parcel from west? Or will they have entrances from those back streets?
They would all enter from that west, that frontage, that West Parkway.
And no exits, then, would be allowed on those other streets?
My knowledge, that'd be correct. I would defer to Rose or Dave.
Okay.
Have other questions, counsel?
I'm sorry, Mayor, no, at the moment I do not. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jacob?
I just want to be clear. Yes, Mayor. E1 allows theater, dance?
Yes.
E2 doesn't allow that? Or it's in addition to what is allowed in E1?
Not allowed.
It doesn't allow it? Okay.
Thanks.
Mayor, I do actually have another question. You included Jacob in that report, or at least in the packet, a scan of the notice that was sent, or at least as a draft of it, and it depicts entrances on both 96th and on White Oak. Is that not in compliance, then?
That rendering, as stated, would have, it would still go through our normal site plan process and everything, so it would still have to meet code. So that rendering, nothing to do. Trying to think of what. Would not be, would still have to go through our code and everything. So there would still be access off of West Parkway only.
Is it still considered to be, then, adjacent to the Good Neighbor policy if they're actually proposing something that they cannot do and propose?
Yes, because the only, sorry. Yes, because for the all intention, the only difference from that would be that, those entrances. I believe, for the most part, I can't speak for the applicant, but I believe, for the most part, that is their, their intention is very similar to that. So I would consider that yes, as a Good Neighbor notice.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, are there questions for Jacob? If not, this is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Sir?
My name's Matt Floden, Grace Architecture and Design. Owners could not be present today, the applicants, but I do represent them. I'm sorry, I caught as much as I could from the hallway. And so I stepped in when I heard that we were talking about access to the site and whether we'd be coming off of White Oak Lane. I believe we would like to come in off of White Oak Lane, as well as off of 96th Street, as well as an access basically on the curve of West Parkway on the southwestern corner, we'd call it. That's the first I've heard that we would only be able to access it off of the north street.
Matt, is it?
Yes, correct.
Matt, are you at a point where you could discuss what the proposed usage of this parcel is and what's driving it to need to be re-categorized as an E2 versus the existing E1?
Yes, it has to do with the proposed users of the building. He's looking for, David Kinzer is one of the owners. He's a retired dentist. And he wants to be able to have personal storage capabilities there, as well as light manufacturing. He has something very similar to this on Mihei Drive in Grimes. Basically, retail, kind of, windows on the front, storefront glass, and on the back would be overhead doors for access and storage. And so it's a light industrial user, not automotive, but something like a cabinet shop, for instance. Somebody that might take and resurface cabinets, you know, something like that. Or a landscaper, someplace to pull in equipment, and then, and also, you know, do book working, and then also go back out and actually mow the grasses and that kind of thing. So it's just, just gives them more flexibility for the users is what they're going for. No outdoor storage, of course. Just, yeah, he's just wanting it to be more like what he already has in Grimes, so.
And then, as far as the question about access points, that's not up for discussion here. There's no, that would be more of a site plan issue, probably appropriately so.
I presume so, right?
Right, I mean, so, we're not, no decisions. I mean, certainly people may have an opinion or thoughts about that, but that'll be something we'll hammer out when we get to the site land. So I guess is the right way to answer it.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't shutting something down, because that's half the reason they like the site is the access to the back and the front.
And I appreciate you sharing that with us so that when we get to that point, we're aware of that, so.
Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Cindy, anybody on?
No, ma'am.
That then, we will close the public hearing at 7:16. Counsel, do we have a motion to approve the first reading of Ordinance Number 1131?
Move approval.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Burkhart?
No.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4B, conduct a public hearing and consider approval of the first reading of Ordinance Number 1132, an official zoning map amendment to rezone 10.03 acres from AR Agricultural Reserve District and R1-100 Large Lot Residential to R1-75 Medium Lot Residential District with A through K Animal Keeping Overlay. We will open this public hearing at 7:17. Jacob?
This was brought to us, this rezoning was brought to us by BEMG. They're looking to rezone that roughly 10.03 acres, roughly, with the intent to kind of subdivide in the future and kind of create some more lots off of that big parcel there for you. That's kind of the, that's the reasoning for this rezoning. The property was originally annexed into the City Johnson in 2019, along with the other parcels of the Woodard Acres subdivision. At the time of the annexation, the property was established with the AR zoning district, along with the floodway overlay district and the floodway fringe district. The map kind of shows where those, does show where that, the floodway and those fringes, all those ways, right? The southern eight, roughly nine acres of the Woodard Acres was rezoned in 2021 to the R100 with the animal keeping overlay. The preliminary plot for the Woodard Acres was approved in March 2021, and the final plot was approved in May. Some of those setbacks that apply to that AR are those minimum lot areas of 10 acres, those front setbacks of 75 feet with a side setback of 50, and that rear setback of 75. For the R100, it's, you're looking at 40-foot setback for the front, and you're looking at 15, 40 for the back as well. So the main, with going to the R175, you're looking at now a front setback of 35 feet, your side setback of 25 feet, and then that rear setback of 35 feet. The main difference is that animal keeping overlay, with the animal keeping overlay, is permitted to be used with only the RE R100 and the R175 zoning districts. Some of the things that are allowed to be kept in there are, like horses, bovine animals, sheep, goats, and other large animals. You're allowed to have one or two adult animals of any one combination of them for every acre, and then additional one for every additional acre. And then for poultry, rabbits, those smaller animals, you can have up to six with an additional one for every half acre. So with the maximum up to 24. Additionally, with the animal keeping overlay, animals must be contained in secure enclosures with grazing allowed up to 50 feet from dwellings and 100 feet from potable water. So we do have regulations stating kind of the limit that they can, there's an extent, it's not just free range. We do, the staff recommends that as proposed, this is all consistent with the comprehensive, that I have 2040 comprehensive plan. To the north, we have property zones unincorporated Polk County. To the east is Camp Dodge. To the south is more property zoned Ag Reserve, as well as R100. And to the west is property zoned Ag Reserve and R100 as well. As previously stated, the property is located in the AE District in the Red River floodway. So it is in our floodway fringe, our floodway fringe overlay, as well as our floodway overlay. We have not received from the public, we haven't received a lot of comments or questions about this. Very similar to the last one. It's been a lot of questions, kind of just, kind of what's the intent? What's going in there? I'm happy to feel, to answer any questions. Staff does, or the plan is under.
Counsel, have any questions for Jacob?
Jacob, I, Mayor, I do. Jacob, what is the maximum amount of lots they can put, place on this new rezoned piece of property?
Off the top of my head, I am not, I cannot answer that off the top of my head. I know the intent. Roughly the intent is to split it up, kind of keep it somewhere, about three lots, based off of that.
And it's 10 acres total?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jacob?
Jacob, my question, and I may even need to deflect this to our resident Beaver Creek watershed representative, but is Beaver Creek considered a potable water source?
I don't know that answer for you.
Okay.
You mean for the animals that will be on there?
Yeah.
That's never come up at the Beaver Creek watershed. I do think there's some upper, in the upper part of Beaver Creek, there are some cattle operations.
But not by the time it-
I don't know, I don't know if there's a fence running.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions for Jacob? This is a public hearing on this item. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council?
Mayor, members of the council, Eric Keenan, 2727 Southwest Snyder Boulevard, here on behalf of Snyder Associates. Before tonight, I guess the main focus of this is, it's a large parcel that currently has a couple lots on it. They're going to just be moving a property line here to facilitate a sale. So we're not creating a subdivision or anything like that. All we're doing is just, we're going to replat two lots into two lots and just move a property line. The pre-plat, final plat's already been submitted to the city pending the zoning getting approved. So it is that simple. I guess I just want to make sure you guys understand that. So nothing's changing out here, except he wants to sell a house that's theirs, so he's going to move a property line. Thanks.
Is he currently keeping animals on the property? And so is the use, just because you're basically saying nothing's going to change, so I didn't know if animals are currently being kept, and now that he's in the city, he's going to have the animal keeping?
There's a barn there. The barn was there before he built his house. I don't know if he has animals there or not. But yeah, the animal keeping is historic, I guess. So it's just something they didn't want to take away.
Yeah, okay, that's, I appreciate knowing that.
That's all it is.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? If not, we'll close the public hearing at 7:19. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
First reading of Ordinance Number 1132.
Sorry, Mayor, so moved.
Second. And a second. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin? Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4C, conduct a public hearing and consider approval of the first reading of Ordinance Number 1133, an official zoning map amendment to rezone 6.36 acres from R175 Medium Lot Residential to R175 Medium Lot Residential with AK Animal Keeping Overlay. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:20. Rose?
Mayor and council, city staff received a request from the applicant following publication of this agenda and public hearing. They have requested that this rezoning application be continued to the following council meeting, February 18.
Open the public hearing. And I guess the question is, do we just take a motion to have it continued?
Correct.
While we're in public hearing?
Yes, if you don't close the public hearing, you don't have to publish a new notice. If you do close the public hearing, you do have to publish a new notice.
Okay. The applicant has requested that we continue this until the next meeting. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4D, conduct a public hearing and consider approval of the first reading of Ordinance Number 1134, an official zoning map amendment to rezone 4.8 acres from R175 Medium Lot Residential District to R2 Low Density Mixed Residential District. We'll open this public hearing at 7:21.
Sorry, Mayor. Mayor and council, this application, this request is brought by the same applicant as the previous item. They have also requested that this be continued to the February 18 city council meeting again. We received notice after the publication had occurred.
Do we have a motion to do so, to continue?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Mayor, I just have one question of clarification. Because we're not closing this public hearing, and it doesn't then need to be noticed, it still will then appear on the agenda, correct? So those in attendance here will know that it's still up for discussion? Is that correct?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If not, we have a motion and a second. Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4E, conduct a public hearing and consider Resolution Number 25-38, adopted plans, specifications, form of contract, and estimate of cost for the Ridgedale Heights Park project. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:28.
Mayor and council, at the beginning of January, we put out to bids for our plans and specs for Ridgedale Heights, which include a 10-foot trail coming off the wet side of the park and going around a playground and shelter area. It would also be the sub-base concrete for the rubberized servicing of the playground, as well as a shelter. We opened up bids on January 28 and received nine bids. The low bidder was Concrete Connection at $148,500, which is about 20, or $40,000 less than budgeted. So we would like to proceed with getting a contract to them to begin work at Ridgedale Heights.
Counsel, have any questions for Jeff?
I didn't see, kind of like, in the attached to the agenda, kind of a graphic description of what we're planning here. Was it there, and I just didn't see it?
Yep, it's in the...
That's what I got.
I know what it is, too. It has a percent in it.
Well, anyway, if you could circulate that around, that would be helpful, so.
Jeff, we've had a lot of public input on this particular park, including a class of, what, fourth graders or something? And they're really excited about its development, so.
Yes, we're excited about it, too. I mean, it's a new park, so it kind of was at scratch, and it is kind of a nice flat park, doesn't, doesn't need a whole lot of grading, a whole lot of work to it, but the playground. And I think with the funding that we have now available because it coming in, where we can get in that basketball court that was going to be an alternate, so there'll probably be a change order coming to you to put the basketball court in, and should be great.
Great.
Okay, any further questions or comments for Jeff? If not, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Saying none, we'll close the public hearing at 7:30. Do we have a motion to approve Resolution Number 25-38? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin? Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. We made some revisions to the consent agenda, correcting some numbers in the resolutions and removing Item 5M to the non-consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Cindy vote, please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coke?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. We'll take up Item 5M first, and that is to consider, and this is under the consent, non-consent agenda, Consider Resolution Number 25-40 to not remand the Board of Adjustment case number 24-08 to the Board of Adjustment for reconsideration.
Mayor and council, city staff, as you're aware, placed a resolution to not remand a decision made by the Board of Adjustment on the consent agenda, which, when the agenda was amended today, has now been moved to the non-consent portion of the agenda. I guess I would defer any opening remarks, perhaps, on the purview of this to city attorney, but I'm happy to answer any questions about the action taken by the Board of Adjustment. So the city code authorizes the council to remand items that come before the Board of Adjustment back to the Board of Adjustment for further study. So that is the decision- So that is the decision before the council tonight, whether to remand the decision back for further study. In addition to what the city code allows for remand, there's also always the option for either party to appeal a decision of the Board of Adjustment if you are dissatisfied with that decision. So while that is not on the agenda specifically, that is also an item that could be taken related to this item.
Council discussion?
So mayor, whenever it's an appropriate time, I intend to make a motion to table this item for tonight's discussion. And my reason for tabling this is that I think, one, we're still learning a lot of information about this issue and kind of what options are really truly available to the city. I had an opportunity to have a nice breakfast Saturday morning with Pastor Jesse and we talked through some of the different issues. And some of the, you know, I think, questions as we try to figure out the Board of Adjustment and its decisions and what that implication could be for other buildings in the community, we had a great discussion. And I kind of highlighted to Pastor Jesse, hey, these are some of my concerns. And he said back to me, hey, I think we can answer some of those concerns. I said, great, I'll send you an email, outline my concerns. And did that later today. And we talked again later today. And his folks are still working to kind of answer those questions. And in the meantime, city staff have provided some more feedback to us, had some discussion even with legal counsel today about what the options are. And I think as a council, it's just so important for us that when we make a decision, we have all the information that we need to make what we think is the right decision. And so, and this is not at all, this is not a decision based on the content of the sign or steeple or whatever. It's even hard to kind of make sure I use the right terminology. But it's really, our obligation is to make the right decision for the city and the residents of Johnston. And we're still learning a lot of information on this. And obviously, one of the things I think we also know is that the Board of Adjustment made its decision on January 16th. So, you know, do we need to make our determination on that prior to 30 days after that, which would be probably February 16th or so? And so I think that's something that we have kind of learned maybe in the last few hours, that maybe that's the timetable we have to work under. So that's why, to me, we're still in the information gathering phase. I'd like to table this with kind of the expectation that we would have a special council meeting sometime prior to February 16th, at a time that we can figure works for, and there's usually a process for this. It's not that unique to do a council meeting in between your regularly scheduled council meetings, so that's not all that particularly unique. But whatever process that we would go through to figure out a night that kind of works for the mayor and the five members of the council, so that we could come back, hopefully gathered all the information that we need and then make a decision. So if, mayor, if you believe at this time it's appropriate to make that motion or whatever.
Sounds like a motion to me.
I'll make a motion to table, it's item, still 5M, is that the right motion regarding the question of whether to remand the Board of Adjustment decision? Make a motion to table that.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I just want, yes, mayor. This, just to be clear, a special session, a special session of the city council is still open to the public, correct? And still will be advertised for the public to let them know when that date and time is. Thank you.
Mayor, would the city allow just a brief comment?
Sure.
I do, I don't want to get in, sorry, do I touch this? Okay, Mason Burkhart of Lilis Petticord. We just merged. Today is the first day of the new name. It's probably more helpful to Ms. Stone. But it was Petticord Wharton and Lilis O'Malley beforehand, if that helps identify who I work with, here on behalf of Attorney, here on behalf of Attorney Church. I don't think today we get into the issues. And Pastor Jesse, I think, will speak next week. But I wanted to take a second and have the people in the audience that are here in the support of their church raise their hand really quick and show just, I think they deserve at least to be seen here today in case they can't make it next week. And because this is going to be, well, we don't exactly know when it's going to be set yet, so there's going to be some things that are involved. So I appreciate your time tonight. You have my letter. Ms. Stone, obviously, speaks for the city on anything that that contains about some of my arguments. But that's where we stand on the legal standpoint that the city. I guess the one point I would make to get into the issue tonight is just delaying. And we don't feel that the city would have the right to remand this back. It lays outside the city's powers. So with that, that's the argument and some of the things we'll get into further in about a week and a half. But thank you. I just wanted to take the time so you could see who's here on behalf of their church and acknowledge that they've taken some time out of their personal lives. Thank you, guys.
Appreciate your comments and I appreciate, we appreciate all of you being here this evening. We, and I appreciate you pointing out who all in the audience is here on this particular item. I mean, obviously, we can see you. And, you know, don't hesitate to communicate to us between now and the time that that meeting is set. Any thoughts or questions or concerns that you have? We will be setting a special meeting to bring this item back. I'm assuming that the motion is going to pass. And we will communicate that information just as quickly as we can, so that, you know, obviously, you all worked around a schedule to be here tonight. We want to make sure that those of you that are interested in attending that special meeting have the opportunity to do that as well. So we will be communicating that as soon as we settle on what that date might be, so. Anyway, thank you again for being here tonight. With that, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to make sure I was clear, or I'm clear with what we're voting on. Because we are voting on whether or not to table this motion, that means we are not voting on remanding this motion. Thank you.
This is just a table. We'll take that item up at our next meeting. Any further discussion? If not, we have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Coke.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Motion passed. Thanks again to all of you for coming. Moving on to item 7A. Consider third reading and to adopt and publish ordinance number 1127, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Johnston, Iowa, 2007, by amending section 106.12 for the purpose of adopting solid waste collection fees to become effective on July 1, 2025. Mike?
Thank you, mayor and council. This is the third reading of our solid waste and recycling ordinance. As you all know, Metro Waste Authority does provide organized collections in the city of Johnston. We received notification that they'll be raising the rates effective July 1, 2025. Our rates are simply pass-through, so what we're charged by Metro Waste Authority is what we charge the residents. There is a $1 administrative fee, but that is not proposed to be changed. So for the actual solid waste collection, it is a 1.6% increase over our current fees. And then for the recycling, it's a 1.3% increase from our current fees. Unless there's any questions, staff is recommending that the council approve the third reading and adopt the ordinance as drafted. Be happy to answer any question council has this evening.
Council, have any questions for Mike? If not, do we have a motion to approve third and final reading of ordinance and to adopt and publish ordinance number 1127?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Martin.
Yes.
Burkhart.
Yes.
Coke.
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7B, consider second reading and possible adoption of the electric franchise ordinance number 1129 with Mid-American Energy Company.
Thank you, mayor and council. This is the second reading of the proposed franchise agreement change with Mid-American Energy. The specific one is for the, for electric. We will follow up with gas at the second, the next item. The proposal is to increase the franchise fee from 1%, which we currently have had in place with Mid-American Energy since 2023, 2024. And that simply was a replacement of the local option sales tax. When the 1% went on for the franchise fee, the 1% local option sales tax came off. So it was cost neutral. The proposal is to increase from 1% to 5%. And really, this is to fund staffing as outlined in the city's five-year staffing plan, and particularly to cover the public safety staffing. The revenue projections for this would increase overall $1.1 million per year to cover those staffing needs. Just some highlights of the staffing plan itself. In 2023, we did adopt our first staffing plan. And that really showed and continues to show that the city of Johnston is very lean compared to our peers at 6.36 FTEs per thousand, which is below our comparable cities of 7.39. The goal is with this to, as we grow, to really maintain that 6.36, maybe slightly increase it. But there is no plan to get to the average of our comparable cities. The plan itself does add 16 and a half public safety positions, six and a half in the police and 10 within fire. I would note that in the fire, clearly, we have a 28-day agreement with the city of Grimes that they would pay their proportional share of the fire costs, so this would not come out of the franchise fee or other city fees. Additionally, the five-year staffing plan does include 14.5 positions in other city departments, including Public Works, which is funded with other sources like our enterprise funds with water and sewer and road use tax, parks, library and administration. Other than that, I mean, I guess I would pause there since we had the public hearing and went through this at the last meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I would note that staff has not received, we received one question about the franchise fee agreement, our franchise fee change in email today, but just asking questions, but we've not received any other public comment on it to staff. That'd be happening. Answer questions council has this evening. Thank you.
Council, have any questions for Mike?
Mayor, I just wanted to point out, Mike, I recognize, we did receive, council received a communication earlier today. And I just forwarded that to you. So at some point, if you'd add it, I guess, to the record for that. I, I'm sorry, I didn't notice sooner that you weren't included in that, but I want to make sure that that gets attributed. So we did receive another communication today.
We'll add that to the record.
Thanks very much.
Mike, were you referring to, when you were talking about police staffing and some numbers there? Was that a document? Because that document's not attached.
No, that is just references out of the five-year staffing plan itself.
Okay, I just think it's helpful to, I mean, like if you're a citizen and you're trying to track along. So if it might, I would maybe, if you have it after the fact, could it maybe attach that to the board document?
We can add that.
I just think that it's helpful to make sure we have as many kind of documents that are in the staff, you know, that are attached that kind of put this stuff in kind of common English language. And I think that does, right? So we should attach it. So I just would encourage you to do that. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments for Mike? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item?
So thank you so much. Mayor Deerenfield, honorable members of the city council. I did email you today, so I'm not going to take up a lot of time. But I just want to share that I'm really disappointed that there aren't more people here to voice their opinions. But as elected official, you are to represent all residents of Johnston, which includes those on fixed income or anyone trying to provide for their family. All we seem to hear over the last few years is increased property taxes, franchise fee increases. And yes, we voted for it, but we were told that the local option sales tax would help us with our property taxes. My question tonight is just a few things for consideration. When do we say to our residents we've had enough? When was the last time we heard about budget cuts instead of we need to find more sources of revenue? And the question that I have asked or was heard at another board meeting was, if growth is so expensive, why are we doing it? Our federal government has embarked on a task of reduced government spending. Our local Iowa legislature understands how frustrated Ions are with the growth of government and local spending. I'm asking you to consider prioritizing your spending and reject the increased franchise fee. I want to thank you for your time and I appreciate the time if you read my email. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none. Maybe just to comment in response to the concerns you just raised. I mean, I really appreciate you being here tonight and would certainly welcome any comments that you have for us, for us as we continue to work through the budgeting process. I have challenged our staff to look for efficiencies, for ways that we can reduce spending in their budgets. What the proposal that's before us tonight does, it tries to help us address the the problems that we have in staffing for our police department and our fire department. We are understaffed in both of those areas. And what we hear from our residents regularly is that they want, they live in Johnston because they feel that Johnston is a safe community to live in. And they always prioritize at the top the services that they receive from our police and our firefighters. And so we try to make sure that we respond to what our residents are saying. That they want to be safe and they want to make sure that we have the police and the firefighters and the emergency medical responders to provide those services to them. So what this proposed franchise fee is intended to do is to help us address that issue, to make sure that we have the staffing that we need to make sure that our residents are safe. We hear, you know, we hear the concerns of our residents. We hear what the legislature is saying about property taxes. And we work very hard, year after year, to hold, you know, hold property taxes down as low as we can in this community. It's always a challenge. We have tough discussions around that issue. Last year, we had a, we had an increase that, you know, that we didn't like to have to make, but we had to make that in order to make sure that, again, that we're providing the services that our residents are demanding from us. I want you to know that we work very hard to keep property taxes as low as possible in our community. And we'll continue to work very hard to do that. Does that mean that we'll never see an increase in the levy? No, I can't promise you that. But we, you know, we take our responsibility very seriously and we make those tough decisions every year. And so, you know, some years we're going to see an increase in the property tax levy. Other years, and we've had, you know, many years where we've done this, where we have lowered the property tax levy. But what we do is we always try and look at what the needs in our community are, what the services are that our community needs. And then we build a budget around that. So I, again, what I would just ask you to do is take a very close look at our budget. If you've got some suggestions for us, we want to hear them. And we will certainly, you know, certainly give those very serious consideration. And as I've already shared, we've asked our staff to identify those areas as well, where we can make some reductions. So again, I really appreciate you being here and I really appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us.
I would just add, that was a very eloquent statement, mayor, and I think we've worked really hard and there's a lot of agreement on it. There's a couple of examples I would highlight of where we work to find efficiencies. One is we share the fire department with Grimes, right? So we have shared leadership there. So there's one fire chief. We have efficiencies on administration on that. Is that easy? Do we agree with Grimes every time on every, on the leadership of that? No, it's not easy. But we do come to consensus and we do work together. But that, but it's a challenge, right? But that's an example of the, of us working to, so that when we buy a ladder truck, both cities don't end up having to buy their own equipment. By having a joint fire department, we can share, buying a million-dollar type equipment, we only have to buy one of those instead of each city buying one. So that's an example of efforts that we try to take to find savings. And frankly, one of- And frankly, one of the advantages of doing a franchise fee is we have a lot of properties in Johnston that don't pay property taxes but do place a demand on city services. So the only way to kind of get them to contribute and participate in covering the costs of these expenses we have is through fees like this. So that's one of the reasons we're certainly looking at it. So, but again, I echo everything that the mayor said, and I think as you've tracked the budget process we're going to go through, you're going to see that there's going to be, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars in savings that are coming, going to be proposed by staff in an effort to keep our budget in this line as much as possible, because we do hear the concerns that you've raised and that others have raised on this.
Sure. If you could come up to the microphone so we can...
In another state, I was a deputy sheriff for 10 years, I was a volunteer firefighter, I grew up in northwest Iowa. Nobody has ever-
Who's many of us?
Nobody has ever questioned, of anybody that I talk to, the need for fire and police, my cities being cleaned, my streets being cleaned, excuse me, my sewers working. Nobody has ever claimed that. But just like we have to prioritize, that should be at the top of your budget, and we should, if we're going to pass franchise fees, say, listen, we don't have enough maybe for this down here, instead of immediately saying police and fire. Because that should be, as a citizen of Johnston, that should automatically not even be a consideration. So I probably, I appreciate what you said. I want you to know that anybody that I talk to has never said to cut the police or the fire. That should be the first point of the budget. And so to say that this is in response to that, I would say I think there's other areas that we could look at before we start talking about the police and fire. So anyway, thank you for allowing me to respond to that, I appreciate your time, and I do appreciate all that you do. So thank you for your time.
I just want to warn you, as you head back, you're going to walk past the librarian, and she may trip you as you- Since you didn't cite the librarian, you needed services, so just as a public safety notice, I'll- Yeah, parks and libraries.
You bet. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Is there anybody online, Cindy? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve second reading and possible, let's see, do we have a motion to approve second reading of ordinance number 1129?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Is there a motion to, for third, I think we're going to pass on that and take it up at the next meeting. I think that's a good idea. How about-
Nice try.
How about 7C? Consider second reading and possible adoption of the gas franchise ordinance number 1130 with Mid-American Energy Company.
Again, staff would be happy to answer any questions council has.
Any questions, council?
Move approval. Second reading.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on this item? Seeing none, I heard a motion.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin? Yes.
Motion passed.
And just for everyone's benefit, I have added the five-year staffing plan to it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Item 7D, consider approval of claims in the amount of $895,624.43. Move approval. Second. You have a motion and a second. Discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Burkhart? Yes.
Motion passed. City administrator, staff comments?
I don't have any comments this evening. It does not appear staff does either.
Okay. City council comments. Councilman Evans?
Evans, thanks. I was going to say something, I can't.
That's all right.
Councilman Burkhart?
While he's thinking, I'll talk very slowly. Well, Councilmember Coe?
Okay, yes, thank you. So my wonderful wife, who was actually here tonight, she snuck in, snuck out, but she was, she's a, one of the things that she enjoys is being a mentor in the jump program. And so we had a chance, last week, they had an event to honor, I think, 20 years of Johnston partnership, and I think their mentorship program. And so we were there, and we met the wonderful woman, I can't remember her name, who's the cook or-
Andrea?
Andrea, thank you, Andrea. And she had the most wonderful things to say about city staff and especially the police department, and how helpful that they are, and their officers are helpful whenever she has a need. And so just wanted to pass that along. It was a great event, and they do really important work, and they feel really strongly that they couldn't do that work without the partnership that they have with the city and city agencies. So just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Anything else? Councilman Burkhart?
I also want to extend my gratitude to our police department. I had the opportunity two weeks ago now to observe them up close as they, a couple of those members worked tirelessly during the Shosam Show Choir competition. And while I chuckle because show choir folks aren't typically a rowdy bunch, at least those that require a police presence, their services were still needed as they attended to folks either battling illness or missing teeth because of equipment falling on them and knocking them out, as well as other things.
That's not show choir, that's music theater.
There may be some, there may be some fans out there that even still are holding a grudge, but the reality is that I am grateful for all the ways they contribute above and beyond just the kind of standard service levels, and certainly participate and engage in a very helpful way, but even an incredibly positive way in that regard. So please pass that back to your staff. Those SROs and other folks that always contribute do a wonderful job of relating and connecting with all of the diverse populations that we have in Johnston, and I'm grateful for it. However, in that same vein of show choir season, there's a lot of sickness going around Johnston, so I'm going to use this as my statement of, wash your hands, get lots of rest if you can, if you're sick, try not to spread it, and look out for yourself, and certainly encourage your neighbors to do the same from that standpoint, because it doesn't seem to be going away, and it's awfully harsh, harsh, and certainly creating burdens among our care community. So with all of that, stay healthy if you can.
I have nothing, Mayor. The only thing that I would share is that a week ago, Sunday, I had the opportunity to go out to the Camp Dodge Iowa National Guard and participate in two welcome homes of our National Guard members, one unit from Kosovo as well as one unit from the southern border. You know, it's always, I just always find it so inspiring to sit there and see the faces of the people who defend us, whether it's overseas or within, within the United States at our borders. And so if you ever have an opportunity, if it works in your schedule, I would certainly encourage you all to participate in that sometime, because it is, it's very, it's very heartwarming to see them upon their return, as well as the families who are there to welcome them back. So with that, we have one additional item on the agenda, and that is a closed session. Could you take the vote, please?
Yep, first.
Per Iowa Code, section 21.51I, to evaluate the professional competency of an individual whose appointment, hiring, performance, or discharge is being considered when necessary to prevent the needless and irreparable injury to that individual's reputation, and that individual requests a closed session. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Motion passed. She calls him lashes, making him stand there. Cindy, I might have to stop by tomorrow morning and sign these.
Okay.